Councilwoman Ralph.
All those in favor of excusing Mr. Owen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to excuse Ms. Reynolds.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Ms. Reynolds, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the June 24th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes for June the 24th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the July 8th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting?
I'd like to amend it to include Public Works.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Okay, committee reports, Public Works.
Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, July 2nd at the Mark Sikowski Safety Planning and Zoning Annex. In attendance Caroline Sikowski-Eckel, Zach Owen, Bob Toth, Chief Kitzler Tyler Kolb, Todd Odette, Allison Murray, Andy Langendorfer, Austin Danton, and Jeff Losi from Tetra Tech, and Jack McDonough from The Edge. Roundabout at Siberian Bergen, the committee requested that a speed table be added on Glenwood Road going north into the roundabout. The city is looking for additional grant funding to help cover the remaining cost of 1.5 million of the total 2 million of the project. We currently have $500,000 from TMACOG. The project will require the intersection to be closed for 45 days. State Route 65 traffic access. Tetra Tech was at the meeting to present some concept ideas on State Route 65 improvements through the downtown area. It was conceptual. The Edge did the renderings. They put together the city of Columbus Street scaping standard. There is no timeline for roundabouts at the entrance to the glass plant or Eagle Point and Dixie. The committee added suggestions. Tetra Tech will take the ideas back and work them into a plan. Bass Pro Boulevard resurfacing will be done during the second week of August by Gurkin. Buck Road Glenwood Roundabout update. There will be a public meeting August 25th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Penta. There is a link to a QR code. There is a link and a QR code to our website that will provide all of the information. Councilwoman Sikowski-Eckel asked if this could be done for all city projects going forward. Administrator Marie said yes. Raider signed data from Jennings. Chief Kitzler provided the data from the speed control signs on Jennings. Out of 6,000 vehicles, less than five or six were over 40 miles per hour. The signs are working and effective at slowing speed. The chief would like to get six, four to six more signs to use on other roads in town. Committee recommends buying more. Jennings Road construction update. There will be a public meeting August 13th. A link and QR code will be created to information on the Jennings Road's product on the website. Update on Windsor Drive. The paving is set to start at the end of July. They are currently working on the Windsor West Side curb driveway cuts and gutters. This was supposed to start on July 8th. Instead, they started July 1st and did not require, provide the 48 hours notice. Current streets set for work in 2025. Hillcrest Riverside, Rinker, and Maryland. These will be full depth replacement with storm improvements and paving. The city was just notified that Northwest Water and Sewer District will be doing work on Rosedale, Rossway, Island View, Maybar, Schreier, and Bergen this year. The city will be adding paving to these projects. Sidewalk replacement on Hanum. Estimate for repairs estimated as four inches deep by four feet wide by 220 lineal feet. The city pays 20%. The owner is responsible for 80% of the cost. Letters will go out. After this project is complete, the committee will choose another neighborhood in need of sidewalk repair. Pedestrian beacon project downtown. We awarded $450,000 in a grant to add two additional crossings with beacons, one in front of the rec center and the other at the Edward Ford Memorial Park. There will be a city parking lot paving project this summer that will pave the annex, city hall, the safety building, and the Walnut Street Lot. The committee asks that the Walnut Street Lot be rebranded to City Lot Number Three.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All right. Reporter of the Mayor Administrator Allison, do you have anything this evening?
I do, thank you. First up, I have a special request for road closure on July the.
August 10th.
August 10th, I'm sorry. For Santis Drive for a block party. So I would need council voice vote for approval. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
What was the date again Allison?
August.
August 10th. From 3:00 to 7:00.
Vote on the motion to approve the Santa's Block Party on August 10th from 3:00 to 7:00. Eckel?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Toth?
Do I have, do I have to abstain or can?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Obadorf?
Oh, I have to abstain? Oh.
Yeah.
He abstains.
I abstained of having the block party.
Obadorf, you were an aye, correct?
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I said aye.
Okay.
Okay, the next item I have is another request for a road closure. This is a date to be determined in the fall. This will be for Danny's. They would like to bring in a national act and they would like to close the road that day. I think similar to something that the city did last year, but they would like to close it where the yellow is marked. We would be able to control traffic. We would be able to put it on the other side of State Route 65, right there at that intersection. The chief talked with Todd Odette and the chief and I spoke about this. We'd be able to maintain a four-foot path for ADA compliance for anybody that was needing to use the sidewalk, but they would like to close it where the yellow mark is so that they would enclose everything around Danny's for this event. And again, it'll be a date to be determined sometime in the fall, depending on when they can get the band that they're interested in.
Go ahead Caroline.
Is that, so all of Bergen would be closed?
Back to the alley.
Okay.
And we'd be able to get everybody out the alley. They wouldn't be able to do any deliveries on either one of the alleys that day because we'd be able to get people that were coming down Bergen out either one of the alleyways.
Gotcha.
East or west.
And we could probably change the one-way.
For that day?
Yeah, for that day.
This would be a one-day event that they would be requesting?
What's the timeframe?
11:00 in the morning till 1:00, 1:00 a.m. in the morning, but that wouldn't be all music and all that all the time. It would be the time that that road was closed like that. That's what they're requesting.
The way I understand it, this would be their official grand opening?
I believe so.
You just put four and a half million dollars into our downtown. Think you, we should give them a night.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I'll motion to approve it.
Second.
Second. Vote on the motion to allow the closure sometime in the fall. Eckel?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item I have is, you've probably seen this beautiful new addition in front of Mo's. I need council approval, a voice vote in order to approve this, so it's, council has said yes to it. It does meet the requirement of five and a half feet. So Tyler was nice enough to go out there and help me mark off the five and a half feet. And you can see that it's back in here. I'm sorry, right there. Five feet. Meets the five feet requirement for ADA. And it's well beyond that. So it allows access for anybody that would be traveling through there with a wheelchair. So I just need a council voice vote on this.
I'll motion to approve the patio seating at Danny's, I mean Mo's, sorry.
Second.
Vote on the motion to approve the patio at Mo's place. Eckel?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Yeah, the next item I have, this was at everybody's seat, the council members. Sorry. It's a summit for human trafficking that's going to be put on in Columbus this year, and it is put on by the Attorney General's Office. The city will pay your $50 registration fee if anybody is interested in participating or attending this human trafficking summit. It's interesting because I know Toledo has some issues with this, so it might be some good information. If anybody would like to attend, please let me know and we'll get you registered and the city will pay. The last item that I had tonight was some Rita issues, and I'd like to give the rest of my time over to Chris, please.
Thank you. So I received a call from a resident who has outstanding penalties and interest on their, on his Rita account. Apparently, the taxpayer was late in setting up his estimated payments in 2022 and 2023. He's since paid all outstanding taxes and has set up estimated payments for 2024, but he has requested that council consider waiving his outstanding penalties and interest in the amount of $5.71 and 8 cents.
This is the one we talked about?
Correct, yeah. He didn't speak about this at the finance meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Waive the fees?
Second.
Vote on the motion to approve the waiver of the penalties and interest. Tenny?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye. Can we talk to Rita? Because it seems like they are sending out penalties after things are being paid off.
Yeah.
And I think that, hey, that's too bad, too late. If you don't bill people before they pay it, then you shouldn't be billing them at all, I guess?
Yeah, I'll reach out to Rita.
Okay. Thank you.
You good?
Okay, I don't have anything this evening other than the fact that I hope everybody had a great Fourth of July weekend. Also, City Council, July 25th is the Toledo Chamber of Commerce Clambake at the Toledo Zoo. So if you're interested in going, just get ahold of Allison. Introduction of ordinances.
No, I got one piece of correspondence.
Oh, my bad.
I have a letter from the Northwestern Water and Sewer District. Dear Members of the District, the district's 10 board members serve terms which expire every three years. At the end of December 2024, one board member from each of the three appointing groups will have terms which expire. For example, township-appointed board member Steve Arnold's term will expire 12/31/24. Municipal-appointed board member Mark Sheffer's term will expire 12/31/24. And commissioner-appointed board member Doug Miller's term will expire 12/31/24. All three will likely be interested in being reappointed, I assume, and will be in touch with all of you accordingly. However, under the board's current bylaws, we must seek nominations to form a slate of qualified candidates for your eventual vote. This slate, notice of 120 days, will be sent to you approximately August 22nd. Would your political subdivision be interested in nominating a person to fill your respective seat? Nomination packet is enclosed for prospective candidates to complete and return to their board clerk by August 8th. The information is also available, available on their website at www.nwwsd.org. So I have the, if anyone's interested, I have an application. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2024-47 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-47, estimate of revenues for the city of Rosford, Ohio, for the period beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025. This is a first reading.
I'm going to defer to Chris.
Thanks. So every July, the city is required to develop an estimate of revenues for the next budget year and send this down to the county. So that sums up the ordinance. As far as the revenues go, they're largely in line with what we are collecting this year. No major changes. Happy to answer any questions. And it, it is due to the county by July 20th, so I.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare ordinance 2024-47 an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption of ordinance 2024-47.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Before we get to resolutions, just so council is aware, the last ordinance that was passed at the last meeting was listed as ordinance number 20-24-45. It should have been 2024-46. It was just a misnumber. So I'm going to ask if council, council would consider right now passing a motion to reconsider ordinance 2024-45, and presuming that passes, then amending it to change the number to 46. I confused.
One more time for me.
Yeah.
So there were, there are now two ordinances listed as 2024-45. The last one that was passed at the last meeting needs to be amended to do it 20, or 46. You see the one we just considered now was 47. So I need a, I need a motion to reconsider ordinance 2024-45 passed at the last meeting.
Motion to reconsider ordinance 2024-45 that was passed at the last meeting.
Second.
Does that need to be, all those in favor of pass, approving the motion to reconsider, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
Now I need a, if you would, a motion to amend the ordinance to change the number to 46.
Motion to amend ordinance 2024-45 to 2024-46.
Thank you.
Second.
All those, now does that need to be?
I would do voice vote on that.
Voice vote on that? All those in favor of amending the ordinance, changing from 45 to 46, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Sorry.
No, that's, no, thank you. Seven years, so. But Kevin can't remember when I made it the last time.
And it caused a lot of problems internally because Mr. Kirk is the one who noticed it and as new as he is, we have to.
Yeah, yeah.
So when I read this, is it going to be 2024-11 or 2024-46?
These are resolutions. We're, we're done with ordinances, Mayor.
No, that's.
Yeah, so this one is, I'm sorry, is this, is a similar, so council passed the, to get a levy on the ballot, it's a two-cushion shot. We have to send it down to the auditor's office to get their numbers, which is what you did before, and then it comes back, we get their numbers, and then the last three ordinances are to put it on the ballot. When we sent the last resolutions down to the auditor's office, they asked that it be, that some of the things be, language be tweaked. Nothing of substance. So attached to your packet now are what we would consider the amended levy request. This is the first one that goes to the auditor. They wanted the date listed of the, of the election, and they wanted something else. I forget what else, Chris, but. Yeah, so it'd be the same process. If council would consider filing a motion to reconsider resolution 2024-11, reconsider that and then amend it to what's attached here, then that'll take care of it. But that's for the, the first two. One is the fire and one is the rec.
Motion to reconsider resolution 2024-11.
Second.
All those in favor of reconsidering 2024-11 amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Then it's a motion to amend the resolution per the attached.
Motion to amend 2024-11 per the attached.
Second.
All those, you want?
No, you can do voice.
Just vote for you. All those in favor of amending 2024-11 as the attached amended resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And then the same thing with 12, motion to reconsider and motion to amend.
Motion to reconsider resolution 2024-12.
Second.
All those in favor of reconsidering 2024-11, 2024-12, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to amend resolution 2024-12 as attached?
Second.
All those in favor of amending 2024-12 as attached, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you, councils. And so the last three are the, one is the rec, and then the other two are the fire. The reason the fire has to have two is because they're separated on the ballot. One is for capital and one is for personnel.
Don't we have two rec?
But the way it's read, the way the revised code, there's, there's two one-mil recs. The way the auditor views it, because it's for the same thing, under, under the revised code, it's only for parks and recreation. So they combine them into one two-mil levy. We do have two one-mil levies now, but they expire at the same time, so the auditor's office just combined it under one two, two-mil levy.
Oh.
That's, she gave us those numbers.
So is that a new levy with new evaluations?
No. It's a renew, well, it's a renewal. The way.
Okay.
Apparently, when one of the levies was passed, it was put on there to pay for the building, and the auditor says that's no longer, it's, it's parks and recreation is what the revised code says. Like the fire says, you know, personnel or apparatus or whatever. If you look at the revised code under rec, it just says parks and recreation. It doesn't say, you know, for any specific purpose.
Okay. I just, I just didn't know since the auditor's combining it, if we get the valuation of the property instead of a renewal evaluation.
It's a great question. I'll follow up with the auditor.
Thank you.
She's already sent us, you got the numbers. Yeah, they already sent us the numbers, basically.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to read resolution 2024-13 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-13 is a resolution declaring the necessity of a renewal levy in excess of the 10-mil limitation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19i for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire equipment, apparatus, appliances, buildings, or sites thereof, and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Anyone have issue passing this tonight? I'll motion to suspend with the second and third readings.
Second.
Anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2024-13. Eckel?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read resolution 2024-14 by title only?
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-14 is a resolution declaring the necessity of a renewal levy in excess of the 10-mil limitation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19i for the purpose of payment of permanent, part-time, or volunteer firefighter EMS administrative personnel to operate a fire department and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Anyone have an issue passing this one tonight? Move suspension of the second and third readings?
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt resolution 2024-14. Eckel?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read resolution 2024-15 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-15 is a resolution declaring the necessity of a renewal levy in excess of the 10-mil limit, limitation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19h for the purpose of parks and recreation and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Move suspension of the second and third readings?
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it?
Erin Crawford, 544 Bronstein. I would ask that you would wait until it's clarified whether this is truly a renewal and will not change the cost to the taxpayers or with the combined village if it's considered a new levy.
It's a renewal.
Did you say you were just checking on that?
Yeah, as far as whether it will be reflected in evaluations.
But it is a renewal.
Well, but a renewal does not reflect new evaluations. If it's not a renewal, if it's a new levy, then the current value of my home will be taxed versus the value of my home when the, when the original levies were passed. So it, it can cost us as taxpayers significantly more if the terms of the levy is not renewal is something else, so.
It, it is a renewal.
Okay, that's all, that's my concern.
If you, I mean, if you look at the body of, of the ordinance, section two, so there's a different process if you're, if you're putting a new levy on or if it's a renewal, this has to be listed, and if you look at section two, it's a renewal of an existing levy.
All we need is a motion.
That was it for the audience? All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move declare an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt resolution 2024-15. Eckel?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Okay, council remarks. Councilman Toth.
Okay, council remarks. Councilman Toth? Councilwoman Obendorf?
Kathy, Mayor.
Councilwoman Eckel?
Traditionally, we canceled the second council meeting in July, and since we just cleared the to-do list, I want to make a motion to cancel the second council meeting in July.
Second.
All those in favor of canceling the second July council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Secondly, since the date to get stuff on the ballot is August seventh, I'd ask to move the first council meeting of August to the fifth, so that we have the chance to pass any legislation if we need to.
Second. Do you need a second? Second.
All those in favor of the motion to change the first council meeting in August to the, what did I say? August seventh?
Fifth.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilwoman Tenny?
No, thank you.
And the lone soldier over here?
I just wanted to thank, just the other day, we had some work being done on Windsor Drive, and very, very quickly, Allison and the team set up a shuttle system to shuttle residents on Windsor Drive to their vehicles at Eagle Point, parked at the old Eagle Point School. So I wanted to thank them formally. You guys did a great job, very, very quickly.
Okay. All right, audience remarks.
Diane Wolf, two sixty-four Jennings. Back to the shuttle. I'm glad you brought that up. Can we make it proactive so it's going to do the same thing for Jennings Road when the same thing happens? I know we've had some neighbors having to park quite a fire away, and then others that are, have some mobility issues. Not necessarily. We can fix the Hoffman Road problem pretty easily, because it's just two houses either way, but Jennings is going to be a problem, so.
If they just let us know ahead of time. I mean, we'll let them know, but it gets hard if they call and say, I gotta be somewhere in ten minutes, and we're already picking up somebody else.
Absolutely.
So they need to schedule it.
Absolutely. So maybe put out a little neighborhood alert that.
We can put it on the code.
And hopefully, we'll get notice when the streets are closed and.
Be sure, I hope so.
Yeah, I hope so, too. All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Jeff Appen, one seventy-seven, Hanum. Since the speed reader on Jennings is working so well, can we get it moved over to Hanum for a while? And so we can run some checks there.
Actually, we just spoke about that this evening.
Rebooting that one, or the purchase of the?
Purchasing more.
Yeah, but, I mean, that could be down the road a little ways, right? So, I mean, it's, it served its purpose, and the idea was it was supposed to be portable, right? It's supposed to be movable.
Chief, is that unit portable? I thought it was pretty much.
No, we just have to drive them to Coleman right away. Pretty easy to take in, take out.
All right, we'll talk about it.
All right. And one thing is, if, if you do move it, can the computer chip be changed so that you register the speed as it gets to a certain point, without, without going into the average thing, where it warns them from, you know what I mean? At, say, two-hundred feet. It should read at, say, at fifty feet when they're hitting forty miles.
I can't do that. I, I can put it in spy mode where it's off, but it still tracks the speed.
But that's still tracking, and it's still averaging, right? But it doesn't give them a reading. It doesn't let them know it's being rep, right? It doesn't flash that.
It doesn't do anything. It wouldn't be on at all. There would be no display.
Okay.
But there's also, it shows a maximum speed on it, too, so, and then, the best way to do it is without, you're talking about, if, if people see the sign and then they slow down, they don't, they don't, they don't close fast as they normally would.
But isn't that part of the reason to have the sign? Is it a deterrent to get people to slow down?
You just want to see what the actual speeds are without an deterrent there, and put it in spy mode. Yeah, it is, it's really done a good job of slowing people down.
That's what we really want.
Right, but you need, you need data to compare it to. You know what I mean? So if you, if you have data of how fast they are traveling at that time, then you put it in there, and you put it in the mode where it shows at an earlier sense and they slow down.
That's what I did on Jennings. It was up there for a week in spy. A week or two in spy mode, and then I turned the display on.
Did you give the spy mode?
Yeah, it's, I've got that.
I mean, did you show that when you showed your pipe? And you showed the last couple weeks, you know, the last couple weeks?
No, that, those were in two-week, those were in two-week increments.
Right, but you didn't indicate spy mode, and what it was.
No, but I have, I have.
Okay, all right. That'd be something to see, you know, what it was prior to that.
There wasn't a whole lot of difference in the spy mode on Jennings. There were some, but not.
And how close does it read at spy mode?
As, as far as, it'll.
It just, okay.
It'll go a long way.
Yeah, it just doesn't come on and slow them down, tell them to slow down.
It just doesn't, it doesn't display anything. It looks like it's off.
Okay. All right, okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yami Burchall, one thirteen Bergen. I have a couple of questions about the DNE special event. What is the purpose of it?
I believe it's going to be their official grand opening.
Okay. Can you pull up the thing that has, like, the yellow? So I understand it's their grand opening, so to shut down the road. What is the purpose of shutting down the road? Are they going to have, like, because I live on Bergen. Are they having tables out there? Are they having live bands out there? What's the purpose of shutting down Bergen for the special event?
They're bringing in a headlining act, somebody that would normally not play a venue of that size. So I think there's, like, you'll have, like, a VIP area, then you have, like, a general admission area, and then you'll have common areas, so it's a, it's a one-time thing.
But what is going to be outside on Bergen Street? Is it going to have, are you, are they having a band out there? Is the band going to be on the stage inside?
The band's inside.
So it's going to be people setting out on Bergen Street?
Yes.
Okay. Next question, the noise variance that you set last summer, is that still in place, or?
Yes.
Is that going to be in place?
Yes.
And then, how am I supposed to get to my house on Bergen Street? So are they just, Superior's going to be open on the front, and you can come back around, like, by Dog's Ice Cream? Or how am I supposed to get to my drive?
Todd, you want to jump in?
Yeah, you would, all of Bergen would be closed. You could either come in from the rec center through the alley, or you could come in at Dog's through City Lot One and come in.
That would be open.
And then, we're, I think they mentioned, we were not going to have the street as one-way.
Yeah.
So, you know, you could go either way down Bergen from the front to the back.
Okay.
No, I think you said Bergen would, would not be one-way. Didn't someone say?
Yeah, I said that.
Alleyway.
Yeah, like, you could go either way. You could get people in and out.
As a resident on Bergen, how wide, knowing this, because it's like, you guys approved it, and we don't even have a date, how wide?
We'll let you know. We'll announce it, and I'll make sure somebody gets ahold of you guys personally.
Well, it's not just me. It's all of Bergen, so.
We'll announce it to the public.
Okay.
And I'll make sure somebody gets ahold of you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?